Now six sixteen. At this time, we're gonna get started with uh public participation, there is none at this time. And we go down to staff reporter, Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti. President Barti, trustees, thank you for everything that you're doing today and for the year. We have several presenters for tonight. And but first, we would like to honor one of our own. We are so happy and elated, and it was good to see on television. And we saw one of our own, our own students, who it's not like he hasn't been here in the last ten, fifteen years, just last year. And so it was great to see him on television, making all the points, sixteen points. That day, you know, if you see Junior when he makes a point, he does his hook move. I call it the hook. And they just kept showing that over and over again. So we are so proud of Mr. Kenneth Lofton Jr. So we were asked that he come forward. He and his mom, as anybody else he want, his dad can join him down there as well. I say you can, as your son.
Yeah, that's your son.
Okay, Mr. Lofton, Junior, if you do know, as I told you earlier, you know, they're their problem. One thing that I did tell, I mean, I told him, not because he's making all of the shots and making basketball and doing all of those great things, but because of the young man he has grown up being. So even if he wasn't a basketball star, that he are and will be, we are proud of you because of who you are, your inner, internal, man inside. So always keep true to yourself, no matter how large the difficulties you make, you be true to yourself and always be our junior, okay? So, Port Arthur Independent School District, we wanna start you off with your plans and your project. Now, this has to be the most important one, okay? This is congratulations, PAIAC graduate, Kenneth Lofton Jr., twenty twenty-one F for that F U B O, you pronounce it under nineteen, World Cup gold medalist. We are so proud of you and yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, Mr. Boone, can you give him the mic, Mr. Boone?
Fantastic, fantastic. Well, I just, you know, thank God, my family, you know, my friends, everybody for supporting me through this journey, you know? I mean, it's not over yet. Still got a lot, just beginning, just got a lot more to do. Let's continue to do what I do, you know, support me through this journey, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, I know they're gonna give you some pictures and stuff.
And while y'all taking pictures, I'm gonna say a little story about Junior.
Uh-oh.
We used to live next door to Junior. And Junior used to just come to my mom and dad's house and make himself comfortable and take his shoes off. And one day, he took his shoes off and forgot them at my mama's house and went home next door. And my step daddy came home and said, man, what man being here with these thirteen size shoes sitting in my house? Come to find out, that was Junior's shoes that he left at the house. But Junior, man, congratulations, we love you. I I saw you grow from a little boy to to a young man. And you continuously doing great things, representing Port Arthur Independent School District, if one. But to represent the United States of America is a great accomplishment. And man, we love you. Continue doing uh God's work and continue doing your blessings. And and most important thing, man, stay in school, finish, finish. And if you have to go somewhere, I'm gonna be your number one fan. Right now, I'm a Kawhi Leonard fan, but I'm gonna be a Junior fan to the end. But continue doing, continue doing what you're doing, man, and and stay healthy and just know Port Arthur got your back.
Very well. Okay, great. Mama's training him right, see there?
That's good, that's good.
I know it is bad, but tomorrow from six to eight at the end, we're gonna be doing one uh class.
Oh, great.
Right, well done.
Thank you. I knew I would be there if I didn't shoot. Thank you for everything, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lofton. And who's the other lady?
It's Kim.
Oh, it's Kim, okay. Oh, no, no, she's talking, yeah. And thank you, Kim, for being there. Kim is talking and, yeah, I remember. Thank you, and we'll see you on the television, Mr. Lofton. Next on the agenda, we have three gentlemen that are, that's working extremely hard. And I am most proud of them for the work that they're doing for the district. They have been with us quite a while, and they've come to us through so many things. You know, when Mr. Rito, Mr. Cipian, and Mr. Metz, when you call them, they're there. I tell you, we've been through a lot with these gentlemen. First, it was, you know, Harvey, they were part of it. And then we had COVID. But as I said, they never did leave, even through COVID. They never left, they were right there like it never, like it never happened. But they were really doing some great things, and they continue to do some great things for our district. So tonight, we will hear from Mr. Cipian, he'll come first, come Mr. Cipian, then you'll hear from Mr. Reed, then Mr. Metz.
Good evening, everyone. Doc, thank you for the confidence you've had in me in these years. Port Arthur Independent School District trustees and the confidence you've had in me in years. And thank you, the executive team, for the confidence you've had in me in years. It's been my pleasure to serve the district, and I couldn't think of a better place to be under such a great leader. I just wanna explain some of the things that we're doing in the maintenance operation department. The objective, when I took this job, was to take care of our children, make sure that they got a safe place to educate and make sure that it's looking good and it's confident building and helps build up their esteem. So I've been working on that task since I've been here. But I'm just gonna go over a few things here that we've had done and how we've accomplished a few things in these last years, especially with the COVID being such a challenge to us. Okay, the maintenance and operations is consisting of seven crafts and a warehouse crew. We got carpenters, electricians, groundsman, HVAC locksmiths, painters, plumbers, warehouse people. And these guys are doing a great job in supporting what we need to do in the district to keep it functioning. And they're doing everything safely and they're doing it with encouragement and enthusiasm. The HVAC crew, the HVAC crew took on a task back in February. We lost our AC in our fieldhouse at Thomas Jefferson. And it was gonna be a hundred thousand dollars to put that unit back in there. And I didn't know who we were gonna get it from, plus the timeframe which it was gonna take to bring it back up. But the HVAC foreman and the electricians and the plumber foremans, they all came together and they've been working diligently in trying to get this system back up. So in the process of doing that, they've replaced all of the, they've placed air handlers, they've placed split units, they put nine mini splits outdoors, and they put thirteen air movers indoors. We saved about fifty thousand dollars. And all of the air registers throughout the school district, they've cleaned to make sure that we have safe air for the children to breathe and staff. Our carpenters, our carpenters has done a great job throughout the district. During the COVID process, we had to put up sneeze barriers to protect our personnel from people that's coming into the campuses. And we've had, we had to put in different devices to allow people in the campus as well as keeping people out of the campus. And these guys hit the ground and they were running hard. And they got all those barriers put up in a very good time. And it has been a very good help in protecting our campus staff from the people that's coming into the building. Also, the carpenters, after we had a Hurricane Delta, we had one of the windows at Thomas Jefferson Mechanical Room was pushed in. And our carpenters got in there, took plywood that we had in stock, pushed the windows up straight, put plywood up to was able to order windows to replace those, those windows that were damaged. They done a great job. And there was other items that was damaged, I think, at the stadium. We had some issues and to the, to the announcer's booth in the area up there, and that was repaired. And also, we had some other building damages that was repaired from Hurricane Delta. Also, at the admin building right here in front, we are in a process of planning to put concrete right here in this grassy area in front of the building. And we're gonna move all of the monuments from our old Woodrow, Lincoln, Thomas Jefferson, and Austin campuses. And we're gonna build a memorial site that will memorialize all of our high schools that we closed down. So that is a project that we're working on this month. Hopefully, we'll have it finished before we get the school season started. At, at PAC and at Lincoln. At Lincoln, we were able to paint the whole library. Now, since I've been here, the paint crew, we only got four people. And those guys really get out there and they put work in. They're painting buildings, they're making repairs to damages that are in buildings. But they took on the task of painting the library, to kind of refurbish that library at Lincoln. And they done a great job. They fixed all the shelves, painted all the shelves, painted the whole library. If you walk in there, it looks like a new, a new area. And really, they really done a great job in there. As well as, right now, they're restriping all of the parking lots in the district, and it's going well. I was over at the high school campus, and it's looking great, and they're getting everything ready for the start of school. Our warehouse guys, right now, are doing a great job of preparing for our audit in August. They're inventorying, making sure we have a tight inventory on things that we have in stock. They've also went through and eliminated outdated material and equipment that is no longer being used and no longer can be used. As well as they provided oversight for our hazmat, hazmat waste site. And they were able to get rid of quite a bit of hazmat this year, they done a great job. The groundskeepers. Now, this groundkeeping crew I got, those guys are hard workers. When I say they're hard workers, these guys come in at six o'clock in the morning and they work till five o'clock every evening. Those guys really put a lot of effort into trying to get these grounds done. Unfortunately, we had a few guys that we had employed, but they found jobs paying better. And they left us in June, and that really set us back a bit. Because when you lose three people off of a crew, that's a big setback. But these guys are grinding, they're even taking on Saturdays now to get grass cut so we can try to get everything caught up before school opens. But our groundskeepers are responsible for seventeen facilities. Now, we've grown two campuses since I've been here. That's across the street, at the special, at Support Services Building, and also the new Port Acres. And these guys, they're digging, they're getting it cut, they're putting their efforts in to make these campuses look good. And I applaud their efforts. Now, they're also responsible for ten sports and athletic fields. So I have a tractor operator that goes throughout the district, cutting big lots, big fields, acres of land. And, you know, he does a great job of being safe. We haven't had a safety incident with that guy yet, and he's been driving that tractor for about twenty-two years. And he's doing a great job. Also, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, when we shut down all the campuses, our grounds guys was here cutting grass. Because even though everybody was at home, being safe from COVID, grass was growing, and these guys, they dug in and they kept campuses cut. These guys, again, are working extended hours plus weekends to do all they can to keep our campuses good. Now, one thing that we need to keep in mind, I don't know, but we've just been getting extreme amount of rain since June. And it's just been nonstop. When I say nonstop, I mean nonstop rain. But the rain that we're getting, sometime it's two, three inches. I mean, that's not the kind of, you can get out there on the field. Because you can get out there on the field, but you're gonna rut up the campus. Because when you rut up the campus, then you didn't just change the dynamic of the grass, especially in your areas where it's really high visibility. So, you know, I have to be careful not to damage our campuses. That grass is important to try to keep going. But we're working on, right now, trying to increase our manpower. We got one guy coming in, should be starting tomorrow. And we got other guys that we're waiting for their process to get hired. Locksmith, our locksmith has done a phenomenal job here in the district. He has taken campuses that we've closed, he's rekeyed them, and we've turned that campus into a storage area where we're storing desks and tables and, and other secured things that we need to secure. And hey, our locksmith's doing a great job of keeping our campuses secure, and we're really proud of him. He's rekeyed the Support Service Center, that's the center across the street. When we first took over that building, vagrants were everywhere, and it was just constant. Matter of fact, last weekend, I think I called Doc and told him that we, the cops called me, they had arrested a guy because they was on top of the building and taking the copper off the building. And, but they arrested him, and we sending a message out that, you know, that building is secure. We don't want people in that building and somebody gets hurt. That would be a bad thing for us, because we are now the owners of that building. So we're doing everything we can to keep that building secure. We have the guys checking it on Mondays, make sure that the building, if, over the weekend, one of them guys might have tried to break in there. Because the building has no electricity, so all we can do is do things from visual. We also, I've talked with Dr. Porter about putting up cattle gates so nobody can drive into the driveways of that building or to that, to that property, so that we can keep people from driving on there with their personal vehicles. Also, during the pandemic timeframe, Doc had encouraged getting buzz doors put on the buildings so that when people come to the building, we can buzz them in, they just can't walk into the buildings. And Mr. Penn has done a great job of managing that situation, and it is running beautifully. Our plumbers, during the freeze, we had pipes breaking, it was just water everywhere. I think we were out of the campus for seven days, seven, yeah, seven days. And our plumber was out here in the front, we had a pipe broke here in the admin building. He was out there in the front, sticking his hand down in twenty-seven degree water to repair that, to get that thing up and running. He done a great job. Also, we've had some issues at our Port Acres Campus where water is backing up into our mechanical room. And he's been instrumental in coming up with a solution to try to get that where that's not a constant problem. Our electricians, oh, man, I'm so proud of those guys. They went over to Woodrow Wilson, farmed up two spots, and we poured a foundation for lighting. So once upon a time, Wilson was dark at night. When you went by, you couldn't see Wilson because it was just shadowed out by darkness. But our electricians put up some lights, and those lights have that building looking fantastic. And in their process of doing that, we got lighting that we can change it with the season, the holiday. If we wanna change it colors, if we wanna make it pink for the month of October because of breast cancer awareness, we can make it pink. We wanna make it red, green, and white for Christmas, we can make it red, green, and white. We can do things that's gonna make that campus look great, because I believe that's where we need to be. We need to be at that point where people see us as doing great things in our community. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for any trustees? Okay, we're gonna go to Ms. Ambrose and then Mr. Giller.
Thank you, Mr. Cipian, that your presentation is excellent, so thank you. But I, I, I would be remiss to not point out some things that I personally have observed and would just like some clarification on it. Now, you have, in regards to the grounds of the schools. What I have found on numerous occasions, and this is not my first time mentioning this, that one part of the schoolyard is cut, the other part is not. I find that the areas that are more visible to the public, those grounds are pristinely maintained. Whereas if I ride over to Lincoln or Booker T. or DeQueen, and not necessarily the same care has been given to those properties. What gives me pause is, if we're having problems maintaining something like the grounds, are we doing our diligence inside of the buildings if something needs to be done? I, I, I do have serious concerns about the, the, the appearance of the, the properties, I really do. I, I understand that you're shorthanded, but I still have concerns about the fact that some of the schools are not being maintained as you say in your report that they are. So I'd like maybe an explanation on that, please, sir?
Well, on the grass cutting aspect of the campuses, I only have six guys cutting grass in the grounds crew right now. I have seventeen campuses that has to be cut. I have to manage it to the best of my ability to keep things moving. I've spoken with Doc, we came up with some solutions that we're working on, which is getting some help that would give us some immediately, some immediate relief. But on the side of being able to stay with everything and keep things up, one of the things that happened to me this year was testing. When testing happened, they're saying, don't make noise at the campus. They need the campus to be quiet. So what I'm recognizing now is that maybe perhaps I had to have the guys work on the weekend to cut those campuses in that regard. But on the regard of the, the campuses not getting the same attention as other campuses, I, I can't really say that that's not, that that's true, because my guys are putting in the effort. And the one thing I think we have to understand is we have two governing factors. One is the, the weather, and the other is the manpower. And right now, I've talked with Doc, we've got a viable solution for the manpower that I think will help us in the future. I've got some, I've talked to some people, and I, I see some things getting ready to happen for us. And hopefully, we'll be able to address that and to keep that where you need it to be for the school district. Because I know when you speak, you're speaking for our community.
So do you feel consideration should be given to possibly outsourcing it?
Well, that's something I talked with Doc about, that's something that we were discussing. And, and we have that on the table, and we're discussing it, and we're trying to come up with a viable solution to be able to take care of that and make sure that, you know, we can maintain it at that level. Because honestly, yeah, we need the help. And the help is definitely something that'll give us that little piece we need to get us over the top.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Giller?
My concerns are similar to Trustee Ambrose. Just outside this building, just outside the high school, just outside of Lincoln. And I haven't even been to the other schools yet. The pressure wash, the appearance of the, the concrete, the building itself, is there any plans soon, one, to, to address those issues as far as pressure wash? Because high school is, is filthy, it's, it's, it's filthy out here. This is administration building, it, it ought to be clean, the concrete, you know? And, and the other issue, and I'm in agreement with Trustee Ambrose, Booker T. Washington and Lincoln are, are not focused on as much as other schools. And the reason why I say that, edging, weed eating, curving, that's something that should easily be addressed. But if you go to those schools, you got grass growing, I mean, even, you go right there, whether during the field. If, if I wouldn't have called Doc about getting the grass cut before they started the construction, that was an issue, you know, neighbors would call her. So what I, what my concern is, since we are the bread and butter of the community, presentation is everything. How we wrap this thing and all the money, the investment that we've made in the district with the new facilities. At Sam Houston, the fence line, we poured concrete to put the fence in, but guess what's happening? Grass then grew over, and the purpose of that was to keep the grass where we can maintain it. So some of the simple things that we think are simple, maybe it's difficult for you, and I want to commend you on the job that you guys have done, all the things you've done outstanding. Can we do more from a board standpoint? Maybe we need to revisit the budget to see if we can, you know, do something with the budget or whatever to help you accomplish your goal. But we need to do a better job of maintaining all the facilities equally. And we, we, we've been talking about different things, you know, having each facility with a crew, you know? Maybe we need to buy some more equipment, place at each, each school, have a crew that is full time job. All he does, walk around, weed eat, pick up the paper. Why are we cutting grass and cutting paper too? Because then the paper is all over the campus, you know? That happens at DeQueen, because I was there, I watched that happen. It happens at, at Lincoln, and we don't pick up paper, we just cut it. And it is all over everything, so it doesn't make our, our campus look good after we done a great job of cutting, you know what I'm saying? The tennis court, that hadn't been maintained in thirty years. When are we gonna do something to the tennis courts? At both high school, at Thomas Jefferson as well as Lincoln, the tennis courts, they're not, they're not usable. They're not being pressure washed, the nets are not there, there's no board up. It needs to be addressed. I mean, I don't know if we need to do that from a budget standpoint, but it's something that needs to be addressed from a cleaning standpoint. Looking at Port Acres, I just went, I just passed through there. Again, I know you're shorthanded, and I know they, I know that you have a push on the guys to get the grass cut. So they're not paying as much attention to the manicure of the lawn. But I think if we just spend a little more money on some equipment, maybe, and make that job a little easier other than weed eat, maybe we need a stick edger that they can run down there and boom, and it's over. You know, something to make that job a little easier, maybe make it a little quicker, I don't know. But we have to come up with a solution to protect our investment, because we, right now, we just spent all this money. And honestly, you know, it's kind of discouraging to the community, to the people, the neighbors that are living there. If our standard isn't up here, it's not gonna elevate their standard. So they got cars parked in the front yard, we got grass growing over the, you know? So we, at some point, it gotta be a breaking point where we, we make sure, just because people don't visit the west side of Port Arthur as often, that's more reason to take pride in what we got or whatever, because we all are products of that, that neighborhood. Amen?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I absolutely agree with you, one hundred percent. And I welcome the help. I mean, if there's a way to get some extra help in, help me get the things done that we need to get done, please, help me. Because the bottom line is, my heart is one hundred percent, I'm so alive for Port Arthur. I mean, I spent twenty-two years in the military, away from home, now that I'm home, I wanna be home, I want home to look good, I want home to be good. But the more important thing is, is that we take the tools that we have and the resources we have now, and we try to do the best we can with it. If more resources come, I'm gonna do more, because I'm a believer. Hey, I like things squared away, I want everything four over. I grew up on fourteen and grand, on the west side, no doubt. I done ran the streets of the west side, I done done Booker T., I done done Lincoln High School. And absolutely. done done Booker T. I done done Lincoln High School. And absolutely, I want those places to look great. I want those places to function great. But the thing I have to work with is what I have in front of me. And I got to take that resource and use it to the best of my ability. And I find the ability of my people and then use their ability to the best of their ability to achieve my goal. Right now, my goal is just get all the grass cut down. Because I was going from campus to campus and grass was just up. Because it's been raining. I mean, has anybody looked out the window when it was raining?
Yeah, it rained today.
I mean, it's real. And I mean, it's real wet. Coming to come down, it come down decent. And I don't know about anybody else's rain experience, but my experience in Port Arthur, when it rains, it floods on my street. And the whole thing come down, when it floods, I cannot, I will not put ground, put the grounds to the test by driving this equipment and just running it up and then making it look like an ice sheet. We don't want that, do we? We want it to be done right. So, I've talked with Dr. Porter. He's given me some assurances of some things that we'll be able to do in the future. And I'm just kind of, you know, trusting that we're going to be able to make it through this process of time. Because I agree with you. When the yard is cut, I want it edged, I want it everything. But when I fall behind, I just need it cut. When I get it cut, it takes away that one bad look and then it gives me something to build on. Because now I got a foundation that I'm just working with. So, if y'all can just bear with me through this process, my objective is to get these campuses ready before we open spring. If y'all can just bear with me, I'm going to ask for what I need to get so I can get it done. And I guarantee when I'm finished, you're going to like what I like. Because I like it when it's good. And I want it good.
We have a few more questions. Mr. Getwood, then Mr. Reed.
Yes, I pretty much answered the question. Just to piggyback off Trustee Giller and Trustee Ambrose, I think that we have found a solution and we are going to work to get you the help that you need. But I just really want to say, and also to Mr. Reed and Mr. Metz as well, when we get to that portion of it, I just want to personally commend you on a job well done, especially throughout the pandemic, especially looking at the presentation with the workers and employees working in the midst of COVID, even sticking his hand in that, the temperature, a degree of water, I mean, that's really remarkable. And I just really want to tell you all, thank you for all that you do. And if you could relay that message to all of your employees and your staff, and just keep doing what you're doing. I know you're doing a good job and we do have work to do. But we would like to commend you just right now.
Mr. Reed?
Mr. Sipian, let me tell you what I know. During Harvey, during Amelda, you are the guys that are still working, seven days a week, ten, twelve, fourteen hours a day. Other people are sitting at home collecting a paycheck. Maintenance department is out there working. Maintenance department is the least visible and gets the least amount of attention of any department in any school district. They are the offensive line on the football team. You don't notice them, but you get nothing done without them. And then you guys go through another situation new for everybody in the district. But even the maintenance department during the pandemic, you've got to keep up with these new PPEs. You're the ones getting them out to the campus. You are the guys who are exposing yourselves out in the community before we had the vaccines come out. You're in contact with everybody. A lot of people don't notice that or don't know that. But I'm glad to say that I do. You know, you guys are so valuable to the district. When we have a situation and we need, during Harvey, during Amelda, and everything in between, the freeze on February fifteenth, these are the guys that show up while everybody else stays home. And not criticizing them for staying home at all. Because there's nothing they can fix. Maintenance is exactly what it says. They're either maintaining or they're fixing. And keep in mind also, they're also among, well, they are our lowest pay employees in the district, some of them. Some of them not even making ten dollars an hour. You guys put it on the line every day? Yes, Mr. Sipian, I see the rain. I'm mad at my yard man for cutting my grass this past Saturday and putting ruts into my yard, you know. But you know that, I know by the time the first day of school comes around, every single campus in the district will be looking good. I had the opportunity to go visit quite a few of them in March, every single one of them. I was so impressed with them. With one thing I can say about this district, the new buildings that we've put up, we can be so proud of them. Because we have a superintendent and we have a CFO that pays attention to our MNO funds and spends them accordingly. And as board members, we have supported all of that. The board has done a fantastic job of realizing how important it is to maintain our new buildings. The entire community of Port Arthur can be so proud of that, every single building. You know, we used to have, years ago, we had some beautiful old buildings. I go back and think about Franklin Elementary, beautiful building, Lee Elementary, the Thomas Edison Junior High School, that was the first Thomas Jefferson High School. Those were immaculate buildings. We let them go years ago because we neglected the MNO funds. We haven't done that now. You're holding a standard. My compliments to you, sir.
Yes, I have a few, one, a few things I'd like to say. In the grounds crew department, do we need to change, what's the total number of guys that you have in that crew?
Right now, I have one foreman and I have nine crewmen.
And how many vacancies?
Two of those guys are doing fields, which is all the football, track, soccer, auxiliary field, marching fields, anything to do with field. They got ten of those things in there currently, and that's two guys. In the summertime, I get help because I get one guy to come and help us. And he does a great job of helping. But the one thing that I really and truly need is I need to stop raining. If I get it stopped raining, we could probably do
That's between you and God.
But honestly, I really feel like, yeah, we got nine people, but it's a lot. And when a guy gets sick or a guy has something going on, he has to take care of his family. I'm one guy short again. So, suddenly I have six guys cutting grass, I'll have five guys cutting grass. But what if two of them got something going on? So, now I go from five guys cutting grass to four guys cutting grass. And I've been down to two guys cutting grass. It's just, it's reality, it's life. I mean, I can't stop life from happening.
Right.
But what I can do is I can try to do my best. Sometime, I had to pull the guys out of the crafts and put them on lawnmowers and tell them, "Boy, didn't they ever cut the grass?" I've done that all last year. Last summer, I was taking guys off of their crafts and making them go cut the grass just to get caught up so we could be ready for the school. And, but at the same time, some other things would be neglected because I had to make that decision. It's a tough decision. But I didn't want the campuses to open and the campuses didn't.
Right. It's two things that I have that to me is very important. We have two campuses that I noticed that have retention ponds. It's Terrell and Washington. My main problem with that is to maintain that. I've seen one at Washington, we got grass growing in it. Is there any way we can dig that out, dig that grass out? We know we have rains come in, we have the rainy season, hurricane season. And I don't want to get to the point to where it rains, that water's supposed to go back up into that retention pond, it don't have nowhere to go because we have grass that grew in it. Because it's so wet, it hasn't been cut. Because it's so wet in that retention pond. So, is there any way that we can dig out those retention ponds, maintain them, because they're very important to make sure that water don't back up into our screws, and keep it sprayed where it would kill the weeds and killed everything in there where it don't grow back?
Right. Well, the thing with that, Mr. President, is that when you kill the grass, it's nothing to hold the ground together so it keep that shape to catch that water. So, when you kill the grass, what it happens, it turns into wood and it just starts flowing into it.
Right.
To the system. So, we can't really do that. All I can do is wait for it to dry so I can cut it. Because I need that grass to hold that dirt in place. Because if I use the dirt to decorate it, then I lose the retention pond. Because not just the mud, but it goes from being mud on that whole campus to mud in the drainage system. And then that's more bad than just getting mud.
Yeah, I just didn't want it, because I've seen it, I just didn't want it to, you know, if we do have a rain, never know, something might brew up in the guff and the rain will come. And I've seen the backup because of the grass.
Well, I just talked with my, my grounds foreman. And I asked him, "Is it, is it safe to cut the detention ponds now?" And the same problem with the campus, if it's wet, it's going to run. The waters are getting in there and it'll get out of there. But once it starts running, it just makes things worse. Because when we do got to cut it, we're going through ruts trying to get the spike cut. So, we've got to be careful. You know, I asked him, "Can we send weedies in, just weeding them out?" You know, and, you know, that's a, that's a maybe a galoshish type of thing, you know. So, the thing is, is that I'm trying to use my grounds foreman forty years' experience because he's built the district that long. And I'm trying to use his experience to help make the best decision for us so that we can maintain our detention pond. We need a detention pond.
Right, right, right.
Because we just dug one at Port Acres and I need that. But guess what? How many have been cut out there? It's a lot, it's a lot. But the more important thing is, is that we come up with a plan. And that the plan that we have, we're able to execute with it.
Well, I think-
That's what I'm trying to get from us right now, is an executable plan that will allow us to go in there, get that grass down, and then keep it moving.
Well, I think it's safe to say, everybody, you didn't answer everybody's question with what we was looking at. And I'll ask Doc and see if we can revisit this back in September to see if everything come to what it needs to be, or if the board need to make any other decisions back in a September meeting, when we're meeting September. And also, I'm available. Drop me off a lawnmower on the screws. I'll cut. I have no problem.
All right.
I can't do that. Okay, Ms. K, you said I can't do it. I can't do, all right. I can't cut. I was offering you my help. I was offering, but thank you.
But thank you so much, sir.
Mr. Reed is next.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sipian, for your report. Okay. And board members, apologize, we didn't mean to take so long with our reports. We do know that we do have a budget meeting after this. So, we're trying to expedient, be expedient with what we're doing.
Let me ask you questions.
Exactly. Mr. Reed?
I'm going to be quick, Doc. You guys forgive me. My voice is trying to leave me so, so bear with me. I put together a little presentation and, of course, it's at the forefront of everything we've done for the last year. And it pretty much dictated how we approached everything when it came to educating our kids, taking care of our building, everything else. That's COVID-19, all right? But first of all, let me also say, I appreciate the board, appreciate Dr. Porter Reed, the executive team, and everybody that plays a part in giving us what we need to do our jobs. Because without the funds, we would not be able to do our jobs. I want to thank my crew, each of them, the custodians, the shipping and receiving, my office staff. And also, I work hand in hand with Mr. Sipian and his staff too, because it takes both of us to get our job done. And it's, we can't do our job without each other. And I'm glad I worked with somebody like Mr. Sipian that he's on the same wavelength that I'm on when it comes to serving Port Arthur ISD. So, I definitely want to say that. Well, coronavirus was at the forefront of everything we did. First of all, we had to train our staff on CDC guidelines. Let me put my helpers on, sorry about that. Train our staff on CDC guidelines when it came to cleaning and disinfecting. And basically, I actually got with a vendor and installed some new machines that kind of saved us money. Well, when it came to the cleaning and disinfecting, it brought the ratio down to like one ounce per gallon. And with which our original machines were like at three ounces per gallon. So, that saved us money there. And we also purchased, and early in the game, Dr. Porter Reed gave me the approval to actually go ahead and get the state of the order equipment. I'm quite sure that you guys, if you've been to the school and you've seen when we had a situation, as soon as the situation happened, we had the electronic electrostatic sprayers. We also had the foggers and misters. And we trained our crew on how to use it. We got the equipment that they actually use. I do have a presentation in a, in thing that so you could actually see it. And that, each of the crew stepped up, they attacked the situation, they disinfected the building. We also put in the touchless hand sanitizer at the entrances, where as soon as you walked in the building, you could sanitize your hands. And basically, that would help stop the spread of COVID-19. And we put in pump stations everywhere, also through throughout the buildings. And if you walk through the administration building, you'll definitely see them too. Okay? Okay, we supplied the district facilities. Every classroom, every break room, every office got sanitizer and they got something to wipe with. Every classroom, all throughout the district, every classroom, every office. We put that everywhere to make sure that when our teachers came back, when our students came back, they felt safe to actually come here. Because that cut down on people calling in. Because if people don't feel safe, they would have been calling in. You call in, you can't educate kids and we can't do the job that we're here to do. We also supplied every facility with masks, with signs, face mask signs, the temperature check signs. We had them in English and Spanish. Also, the floor stickers for the social distancing. Workforce Solution partnered with us, and they're going to partner with us again when the school, when school starts. They got a COVID grant and we're going to be having some employees, well, their employees, coming and doing the wipe downs at our entrances like we had them when COVID first started, when school starts. So, and that's not going to cost us a penny. I deal with Ms. Alicia over there and she takes care of it real well, all right? We also purchased, and thanks to Dr. Getwood, by way of Ms. Jeans, we updated and changed out all our AEDs, which is, you know, our automated external defibrillators. And we have, in the AED kit, we also have our bloodborne kit, you know, our blood kit, to make sure that we are able to take care of that. And we have them everywhere in the district within a two-minute walk-in period. So, if there's an incident or an accident or something like that, and they're needed, we have them in our district. And they're bilingual. And they teach you, I mean, they talk you through the whole thing, okay? And we also, I just received first aid kits to go with those. So, I know our nurses stations have first aid kits, but I wanted to put first aid kits on those too. And that way, if you need a first aid kit and the AED, they both go together, all right? Okay, I just, I completed and submitted to the Texas School Safety Center, two new annexes, a train derailment and communicable diseases annex. And basically, train derailment is because we have schools that is within a thousand feet of the railroad tracks. And that was something that was just sent down by the state of Texas, along with the communicable diseases. So, I got those in. One of them has already been, the train derailment has been approved. I'm waiting to see back on the communicable diseases. Okay, also, shipping and receiving. I mean, you know, I know our president knows about shipping and receiving because I know he has some history there. And he knows those guys work. Dr. Porter, we know that they work. And whenever something needs to be done, we call shipping and receiving. Something needs to be moved, something needs to be taken from one place to another. Something that came in, I got to have it now, phone call is made. So, those guys have really stepped up. They pretty much deal with all the purchase orders. They deal with all the technology. They actually have a immunity sheet where they log in and stuff. And they've delivered over ten thousand Chromebooks and tablets since the start of COVID. It's more, it's approaching close to twelve thousand now. So, our kids could be educated via COVID-19. They also, I mean, were responsible for the PPE counts to make sure that they call each facility and see how many PPEs they had. Did they need face masks? Did they need shields? Did they need, call the nurses, see if they needed disposable gloves? And they made sure that all of that was taken care of all year long. They also shipped out face shields to, for every kid in special ed that requests them. And we also stocked extra face shield there. And of course, they were the ones who shipped out all the cleaning supplies and everything to all the campuses. were the ones who shipped out all the cleaning supplies and everything to all the campuses. Now, what we got in progress right now, the custodial team is getting the, uh, district ready for, for the upcoming school year. Okay? And of course, they're, they're cleaning, disinfecting, waxing, stripping. And they, they have pressure washed some of those entryways. They just did, uh, uh, Lincoln, the entryway at Lincoln. And, and they've also, uh, pressure washed, um, they just got the pressure washer at, at Lakeview. So, they're gonna be washing the, the outside entry right there, what we can take care of a bit. And they're getting the classrooms ready for this upcoming school year. And, uh, I got kinda excited with this last line here with Ms. Jean. What I meant was each campus is gonna be getting new equipment, okay? Uh, because of the, uh, CARE Act, we're with the ESER funds, and I've, uh, gotten quotes for new scrubbers. We, we're gonna have some, uh, ride-on scrubbers for our high schools and our junior high schools, and some walk-behinds for our, uh, elementary schools. Because the old way of doing business, taking a mop and just mopping across the floor and stuff like that, you know, it, it takes up so many man hours to actually do that. When you could just walk behind a machine, get it done, it, it cleans the floor. And then it's, it's way more sanitary because you're not spreading germs. So, I'm looking forward to getting that taken care of. All right, as far as our staffing needs, I just, as, as of the fourteenth of, uh, July, I hired five new people. And, uh, I have two that's, uh, set, well, actually was in, was in orientation today. The other three is gonna be set up for orientation. I have four openings. And, uh, those four openings is in position, go two oh six, two oh eight, two twenty-two, and also one receiving clerk. And we're actually, we've already pulled out positions and, uh, we, we, we've already set up interviews to try to fill these positions. Anybody have any questions?
Ms. Ambrose?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Rito. Very good presentation. I have a question though. How many, how many custodians do you have per campus?
There's different numbers on, on the campuses. Um, and, and they all, and then I have different shifts. So, basically, the high school campus has about, uh, fourteen. Um, TJ has eight. Lincoln has about, uh, six. And it just depends on the elementary school. I have anywhere from three to five at elementary schools. And also, let me, let me make sure that I explain this. I say that I have that number, but when, the general cleaning of a building is actually done after school is over. So, if you have a person that comes in at, and, and opens up in the morning, it, they're limited to the cleaning that, that they can do. So, so basically, the bulk of the cleaning is being done by the other ones. So, you can subtract one person from that. And then also, the middle person comes in and they get off maybe at about six o'clock or something like that. So, they truly only have a couple of hours of cleaning to actually do. And then when you, 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 uh, put in the after-school programs, that, uh, so that takes away from what could actually be cleaned also. So, basically, you know, uh, it's, it's just moving the schedule around. And that's why I've extended hours too. And that's why, you know, I, I had to do that. I've had to extend hours to make sure that they work longer, you know, they came in later so they could, uh, get the, the, the bulk of cleaning.
Okay, one last thing. And I'm sure, I'm sure most all of us in this room knows that the governor of the state has issued a mandate saying that we cannot force people to wear masks. You have some signs there, uh, regarding face masks and temp check required. You are going to be removing those signs.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Okay. Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Gilbert.
How you doing, Ms. Gilbert?
Mr. Rito, I just want to commend you. I've been inside the school, you know, because my kids are at Sam Houston. And I just want to say that, hey, job well done. Schools are looking good until, on the inside. Uh, just one thing I would just want to add. I know you probably already did the research. Uh, but what I've noticed, uh, at the big box stores, what they're using is this, uh, this, this ride-on.
Yes, sir. That, that's very good.
And it does everything. Take, it strips the floor. It, 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 if we spill something and it vacuums it up. I mean, it does everything. So, you can, you can eliminate some manpower just by, um, purchasing a few of those for different, uh, facilities, you know, different, different campuses. That would ever make the job putting on wax. I mean, their floors are back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's exactly what we're doing.
They're not using a mop.
That's exactly what we're doing. And that's what I've already got quotes for. And, uh, soon as we get the, the money in, we're gonna get it taken care of, trust me.
Uh, one, one last question.
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, defibrillators that we have, each campus varies on how many they have at the campus? Or all of them have the same number of them?
No, sir. It, it, it goes by the size.
The size of these, the size of the school.
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, how often, how often do we have to maintain those? Because, I mean, hopefully we won't have to use them. But how often do you have to keep those, uh, the maintenance of them, checking them and make sure they're up?
They actually, they, well, it's supposed to be one, uh, once a month is when they, they actually have a check done to them once a month.
Okay.
And they have a, they have, they're color-coded. Uh, just like the old, old batteries you see years ago.
Right, right.
They go red when they go down and stuff like that. These do exactly the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rito. Next on the list is one of our novice. He's coming. So, uh, he's coming. He had, he's, he's new to the position but not new to the district, Mr. Metz.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, executive team. Thank you for having the trust of me to lead the transportation department. There's a lot of challenges that are, that are facing us and I think some of them we've overtained. We still have a lot of work to do. So, first thing we did is I got with our office staff. I thought we needed a mission statement. We didn't have, we didn't have any mission. We didn't have our, our goals. So, we come up with, with a mission. And our mission simply put, the mission of the Port Arthur ISD Transportation Department is to provide a safe and timely service that supports the educational and extracurricular objectives of the Port Arthur ISD. Okay? So, we're gonna post this in our break room, post it in the dispatch office, and hopefully this will help keep us, uh, focused on what we do and why we do it. Um, I firmly believe that we've got to, we've got to have that, that reminder every day. Looking back, uh, COVID year, uh, last year, transportation, we drove just over two hundred sixty-five thousand miles, which included four hundred forty-two stops a day. All right? We transported nearly five hundred kids each shift. That's the AM and the PM, to school and from school. Now, keep in mind, this is during COVID. So, uh, transported five hundred kids. Uh, and also, we covered two hundred fifteen field trips during the school year. And we did this with just nineteen drivers by the end of the year. So, the drivers we had, they stepped up and, and we covered what we needed to do. All right? Uh, our organizational chart, it's every year review. We got the, the director of transportation, got assistant director, mechanic, mechanic helpers, uh, secretary to the transportation director. Then we have the route supervisor, dispatcher, the bus drivers, and the aides all answer to the transportation director. Our office staff, uh, the director of transportation, uh, the assistant director is open. We've got it posted. Uh, waiting, waiting for it to close so we can start the interview process. It, it just posted. Uh, Ms. Zeno, the transportation secretary. Ren Lloyd is our route supervisor. Our dispatcher's, uh, DeShin Rito, our mechanics, Robert Fanita, August Griffin, and Jalen Alexander. We have three mechanics that cover, that, that maintain over a hundred and twenty district vehicles. So, we gotta commend them. They do a great job, uh, with, they do, do a great job with what we got. Uh, then we have Jonah Fitzgerald as a mechanic helper. He's coming away. He's, uh, becoming a mechanic. Our positions, uh, if we're fully staffed, we need thirty-five drivers, fully staffed, thirteen aides. That's to cover all of our routes on a daily basis. Currently, we have twenty-one total drivers. That's as of today. Uh, seven, seven-hour drivers, we have four seven-hour drivers. That's Wheatley. They drive only Wheatley. Six-hour drivers, that's fourteen six-hour drivers. Uh, one four-hour driver and one, uh, I'm sorry, two three-hour drivers. And the three and the four-hour drivers, they cover the afternoon routes. Uh, new hiring process. We have four drivers that are fully credentialed that we've hired, uh, ready to drive at the end of the school year. We have two drivers that have their commercial license that are not fully credentialed to drive a school bus. So, we're waiting for them to get, uh, get hired on so we can finish training them to get their, their S endorsement. I also have three drivers set up for interviews next week. So, hopefully, the start of school, we should be at twenty-nine drivers. The bus aide position, right now we have thirteen bus aides. Uh, three, uh, we got one eight-hour bus aide. We got three seven-hour Wheatley bus aides, eight six-hour bus aides, and a four-hour bus aide. We have, uh, now, we, we're fully staffed on the aides, but we don't have any backups if somebody's off. So, I have interviews for, uh, two more aides next week. The routes, total projected routes for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, thirty-five routes. So, we're gonna cover thirty-five routes with twenty-nine drivers. So, you ask yourself how we do that? We pull out our magic ones. Uh, those routes break down into twenty-three regular ed routes, eight special ed routes, and four Wheatley routes. So, this is how we plan to cover it. All of our drivers, due to time constraints, due to time constraints and driver shortages, we use a tiered system. So, we have five routes that are three-tiered systems. So, what that means is that five of those drivers are gonna drive a high school route. They're gonna drive an elementary route and a middle school route. All right? Then eighteen of them will drive a two-tiered route, which are a high school and/or a middle school or an elementary school. Uh, so that's how we're gonna cover it. Uh, and then we break them down. If we need, you know, if, if somebody calls in six, we divide the, uh, we divide the routes up. We'll give, maybe one driver will have two high schools. He'll do his, go drop off, come back, do another high school. So, what you see here is from the demonstration, uh, we were so gracious for you to approve us to have Wi-Fi and upgraded camera system on our buses. So, what you see here is actual footage from the demo that the, the ProVision people put on for us. The Wi-Fi, uh, is gonna provide all the students with Wi-Fi capability while they're on the bus. So, if they have their Chrome tablet, they can sit there and do their homework while they're on the bus. All right? The other, the other benefit is we will be able to log in and find out where the bus is at, what they're doing. If there's a disturbance on the bus, if we're missing a kid, we can log on to see if he got on at the school, where he got off. We're gonna have a camera, an exterior camera over the door. So, we'll be able to see where he went until the bus pulled off. So, uh, there's, there's some great benefits. And the next slide is just some more pictures of the demo. And that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Ms. Ambrose and then Mr. Gilbert.
Uh, thank you for your presentation. And I don't want anyone to think that, oh, Ms. Ambrose is just keep asking this question. I just have, I just have some genuine questions.
Oh, not at all.
And, but, but thank you for your report. Let me ask you something, sir. Do we still offer door-to-door service?
We do door-to-door for Wheatley and special ed only. We do not do door-to-door for regular ed.
Okay.
Now, I, I, we, in the past, we've had a three-block, uh, maximum. You know, you're not gonna walk, the student's not gonna walk more than three blocks to his, his stop.
Right, right. So, but Wheatley and?
Special ed.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, do you have your plan in place once we start our, our, uh, football season start? I think our first game is August twenty-seven. Do we have a plan for, you know, how many buses we're going to need? And do we have a backup plan to get the kids from school? And then still send the, the team or the band or whoever's gonna go with them to the football games?
That's certainly gonna be a challenge. Ms. Lloyd and I were talking about that just, uh, yesterday. And I think our first game was, if I'm not mistaken, was, she said was in Prairie View.
Yes.
So, um, you know, I think football takes four buses and band, I think was, I, I, I don't, I don't know what she told me. I don't know that she told me the number of the band. It'd definitely be a struggle. Um, you know, it's gonna depend, you know, if, if we can get to close to that thirty-five mark with our drivers, which I think it's, it's a realistic goal now. I've, uh, I've been fortunate, uh, to be able to recruit some, some drivers from Lamarport Authors Driving Academy. And that's really helped us. Uh, we recruited some of the old employees that have either retired or, uh, left for whatever reason. So, I, I think the thirty-five number's obtainable. Um, i- if we can get to that, I think the challenge would be a whole lot less.
Okay.
Now, can we do it right now with twenty-one drivers? Absolutely not. It would be especially got to Prairie View. It would be a real struggle. Uh, but if we can get closer to that thirty-five mark, I, I don't see where we couldn't cover all the needs of the district.
Do you think it'll become necessary where we would, because I know I recall a few years back, we actually, uh, utilized sun couch for transport as well. Do you think that might?
You know, looking at it, you know, maybe Prairie View ain't in, may be a good candidate when you're driving that far. And if the game's at seven o'clock and it's still a three-hour drive, you know, two and a half hour, three hour, you know, it may be a viable option. Uh, you know, because you're taking, you know, four, what, eleven buses, eleven drivers, you know, it, it may be a viable option. Um, but, you know, like I said, if we get closer to that thirty-five mark with our, with our full-time drivers and we, we have four auxiliary drivers, you know, it, it, it's gonna be a real possibility that we can cover it in-house. And I, really, I wanna cover it because our drivers need the drive time. They need the, the, you know, they need the time. And I would much rather take care of our drivers then.
Absolutely.
Than sun travel.
And Mr. Gilbert and then Mr. Getwood.
Hold on, one question. Um, what do you see some of the challenges as far as recruiting drivers for Port Arthur Elementary School District?
The main challenge i- is dollars. It's, uh, it's the pay of the bus drivers. Now, I mean, we're, we're right in line with the rest of the school districts as far as, is what we're starting out on our pay. But they can go to HoTard, which, you know, we call them the white fleet, you know, uh, the driving refineries. And they're making nineteen, twenty dollars an hour. You know, they're not having, they're not dealing with, uh, you know, all the issues we, we deal with on the bus. So, it's, you know, the downfall is they're getting up at three o'clock in the morning and driving. But the main thing is, is the dollars. It's, um, that's, that's the main, that's the main focus of our problems. So, I mean, we've been blessed with, y'all been blessed, we've been blessed with you guys giving us new buses. So, the equipment's new. All the buses have AC in them. So, that's not a problem. I mean, it, it boils down, it's to, to dollars, you know, at the end of the day.
Thank you. Mr. Getwood.
I just have two questions, Doc. So, um, first and foremost, I just would like to commend you as well again on a job well done this past school year, especially the COVID year. Uh, my first question is with the new Wi-Fi cameras, will we have someone, um, that will be either their job or a part of their job to watch those cameras, either the ti- the whole time while the buses are in motion? Or will it just be when, um, an incident occurs, we go and check them?
Uh, I, I think, uh, kind of a mixture of both. I think, uh, with the Wi-Fi's, I think we can use it as a tool to coach our drivers. We can do, uh, a driver evaluations without even knowing that we're watching. So, you're gonna get a true representation of what they're doing while they're on the road.
Okay.
So, I think, I think, one, we, we can do that now. Um, but I think the main goal is, is to, uh, is to, if we have issues, we can log in and see what the issues are. I don't, I mean, right this point in time, I don't have any staff that has the time to sit there and watch the drivers on the route. We just don't, you know? So, but I, I think there's certainly a time and a place where we can do it for evaluations, do it if we need, if there's a, God forbid, a child got off on the wrong stop. You know, or, you know, an incident that we can look at and have some force, uh, some, uh, sight on what's going on.
I think that's great. Um, and my last question is, so what are the requirements when it comes down to becoming a bus aide?
Uh, you know, not, you know, we just need somebody that's gonna show up for work.
Okay.
Good with the kids. Uh, you know, that's really the, the main requirement. Um, that's pretty general.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metz.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I don't believe you. Thank you to the three, uh, three gentlemen. As I say, they work very, very hard. And they're, um, they're on call twenty-four, seven. And they are ones that I definitely appreciate. When you call them, they answer the phone. And I definitely appreciate that. So, thank you. Next on the list, we have our ESER funds. You've been hearing about ESER for a while. ESER one, two, and three. A lot of what we're doing is coming from our ESER funds that we will have for three years, um, in the, in the, in the district. Now, one thing we always have to remember, that when we talk about, we get more money, the thing we always have to remember is that these funds will end. This is not gonna be forever. And what we do- This is not gonna be forever, and what we do, we have to, what we purchase or the purchases that we have, we have to maintain after ESER is over. So it's not like we can just hire a bunch of people, do a whole lot of stuff, and think it's gonna last forever. It's not. We have to be very specific in what we do and be very, and plan, plan a lot. So Mrs. Jeans is gonna go over the ESER report, and it's, I think it's exciting, and it's gonna help us do a lot, and I guarantee you that our employees will love ESER.
Well, thank you, Board of Trustees President and other board members, and Dr. Porterey, and of course, our executive team members who are here. We have started working a lot on our ESER grants and to try to figure out exactly what we could do to spend those dollars. I thought this presentation, that we used this PowerPoint that shows the dollars is coming in the door, and that we're excited about the possibility of having those dollars. Okay? So, and I'm gonna be real brief, but this explains what ESER really is, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. Now, after COVID, we got some other dollars that you've heard about that were used in the result of some additional programs, but those were, when we got the computers and the other things of that nature, we had some dollars we got with FEMA. I didn't plan to go over those dollars, but those were most helpful as well. I wanted to just kind of focus a few minutes on our new experience and what we're getting ready to, the path we're getting ready to take to handle the ESER dollars. The main emphasis is preventing and preparing us for responding to COVID-19. And that second item, addressing learning loss, you will hear a lot about addressing learning loss. I think all of us, and I say that because, in my opinion, all of us, regardless to whether you're a parent, a student, we all need to look at what we can do to try to help the districts recover from the learning loss. We're working, trying to work on preparing us for reopening the schools, improving the air quality, and it has to be evidence-based intervention that we're responding to the students' needs. We're looking, and we've talked about it, it's not just that they have problems with the learning loss because they were not in school. They have, we've got to deal with the emotional needs and the social needs, and we've got a lot of things to look at to try to make sure we get our students back and get them where they need to be and ready for graduation eventually. And so, then we're addressing the disproportionate impact, as I said, on the student population, and we have, we do have an impact, and it will impact the dollars that the district will receive. Okay? So, our entitlement, I wanted to just briefly go over, make sure you understand how this works. We received the ESER one dollars, and that was in nineteen-twenty, for the nineteen-twenty school year, and it goes all the way back to March the thirteenth, and it brings it forward till nine, to nine-thirty of twenty-two, that three million dollars is available to spend. We've already spent our dollars, it was actually spent for us because we did not have students at school, we, those dollars were used to address the lack of attendance, as you know, school districts are really paid based on the number of students in the school. Then our ESER two program, and the ESER two came about after we heard about the ESER three, but ESER two is another year, see, you can still spend, the timeline goes through September of 2023, and that's twelve-point-three million. We'll talk a little bit more about what we've got there, but we've not received any of those dollars, and that's why Mr. Rito was looking to me, because he's looking at what he's wanting to spend, but notice on ESER three, we have, we're getting twenty-seven-point-six million, and again, we have not received those. We can only receive entitlement of eighteen million until USDA and the application process is complete to get the other one-third. I think they're very close to that, and it may be coming soon. Our biggest issue is this, we have to have these discussions and go through the process before we can submit our application. Okay, next slide. The purpose of the statutes, I think really the first slide that I showed, it just breaks it down, statutes themselves are different, and I don't know, I showed on the previous slide, all of them are not governed by the same rationale, it has the CARES Act, the C-R-R-S-A Act, and the A-R-P Act, which is in fact your emergency, I mean, your American Rescue Plan. All of them look very similar. I think, though, ESER three brings about, talks a little bit more about enabling the homeless children and the youth to attend school and participate fully in school activities. So they're putting some more emphasis on the social and other needs of the districts. Okay? ESER three funding, so let's talk about the requirements there. We must expend a minimum of twenty percent on evidence-based intervention. So when you know, when the test scores came out and they start talking about what the test scores were, there's got to be comparative analysis done to make sure that what we're, what our plans are, it really does have evidence to prove that it will improve and reduce the learning loss in the school district. We're looking at summer school, we already have summer school in place, but we're looking at what we can do to handle summer school, extended day, doing everything we can to help improve and reduce the learning loss. And again, ensure that the interventions respond to, or for, the students with academic, social, and emotional needs. There are additional dollars that can be spent for that purpose, just to, again, we're looking at the total student. Okay? So, the next big thing is that we are required to engage our stakeholders. We're required to provide them with an opportunity to provide us with input. We have certain groups, and you'll see the group that's listed there, of those that we are required to secure their input. So what we've tried to do on the next slide is to kind of give you a better idea of how we, what we did in order to reach out to our stakeholders. We solicited suggestions from our PA ISD leadership team. We had some breakout sessions, we had some retreat with all of our leadership team, and we thought we would ask them. So we want you to write down, if I gave you three million dollars, tell me what would you do, and what do you think you could do that would help the school and help the district to get back in good shape after the pandemic? And so we broke it up and gave them into, had certain breakout groups that focused on how they can handle technology. We had one focused on HR issues, so we broke it up into five groups, and it was led by our executive team, and we led the charge of trying to get those groups to give us some ideas of what they thought they could do, or should be done. So we have all the written suggestions that we received from them. And then Dr. Porterey's met with students and got their input and ideas on what we could do. So then we said, well, we need to develop a stakeholder survey, and we used it through social media and other sources where we solicited all of the stakeholders and said, we need you to complete this survey and tell us what you think. We didn't tell them, okay, we've got some guidelines that you have to follow, we didn't give all of that, we just said, if you had twenty-seven million dollars, what is it that you think is the most critical needs of a district? I think Dr. Porterey's met at least on two occasions with the Board of Trustees to get your input and suggestions as well. And so tonight is also just to make sure you know we're planning to submit our application next week, but we want to hear from you if there's something that we've missed, but we will be sharing with you our high-level plan shortly. And I mean, on these same slides. Okay, the next one. So, some of the things that we've heard is provide additional learning opportunities for other times. Someone suggested that maybe we needed to do something like have night school or weekends, we need to do something for summer school. Yeah, we already have programs on weekends and summer school, but suggestion was made that maybe we should look at opening up a night school for those that could not come to regular school during the day. Increase employee pay, again, these were suggestions that were made, we can't use all of them for various reasons. That's one that's a real challenge, as Dr. Porterey indicated. The funds are limited, you cannot increase someone's pay and assume that if we will give, that pay would be continuous, recurring. So the funds go away in three years, so you could not do that, but it was a suggestion made. Suggestion was made to increase the salary program, look at extra duty pay, look at sign-on bonuses, assist them with certification classes. We've got, we've received a lot of excellent ideas of things we could do. Suggested hiring additional staff or temporary employees to help with both recovery of the learning loss, as well as to help clean and maintain the facilities. Again, these were suggestions we received from the stakeholders. Establish some classrooms in other buildings. Now, that one, when I heard that one, I was thinking, oh no, we just got rid of those portables, but that was a suggestion that someone made, was that maybe we should, you know, have additional buildings that we could spread the students out and try to teach them there, and teach them in portables. Provide some additional tools for our special needs students. When we were meeting with the, in our breakout session, I heard about a lot of things that needs of our special needs students, and we probably need to spend some dollars to try to address some things that would help them. They call it, and you may know this, but they're talking about manipulatives and things that they, it could help them in the classroom while they're trying to learn, but they help them focus better by getting some additional things for our special needs students. Replacing HVAC system. Now, we can look at that, and that was a suggestion there, that one initiative there requires TEA approval on the front end before we purchase any HVAC equipment or systems, as well as the next one, which it was suggested, it was suggestion made to secure additional air filtering for all locations. Then I thought the last one was interesting, provide additional training opportunities for the parents, so that the parents themselves can help us and help their own students. It would maybe help them be more comfortable, maybe we could have some type of classes or something so that they would be able to, wouldn't be caught off guard like we were at the pandemic where they didn't know what they needed to do. If we were, if they would partner with us, maybe we could help them to understand how to help their students better. Okay? So, then the results of the survey. Now, everything I showed you on the slide, the previous slide, that was input not just from the survey, it was a result of everything, or things that we had heard from the breakout sessions, from the leadership meetings, from the students, from anyone that gave us input. We just kind of captured some of those things and gave you a high level of some of the ideas that we heard. But if you see here on the survey, we had a hundred and thirty-seven participants that participated in the survey. The one question we asked is, we gave them the amount, the twenty-seven million, and we said, how do you think these school-level funds should be spent to reduce student learning loss? Since that's very critical for us, we wanted to hear what they had to say. So thoughts is a key word, we use this system, it's called, the company that we're using that provides, it's called Thoughts Exchange, and they gathered the survey results for us and provided information back to us, and they said that sixty-eight participants shared their thoughts, another ninety participants actually rated their thoughts, and then eighty-five of them explored the thoughts. Now, why is that critical? It just means that they didn't just write something down, they actually went in and say, I think this is more important than this, and they went in and tried to explore it, make sure that we had a better understanding of the details. Okay? Next slide. Now, this kind of gives you a breakdown of what, who we heard from. We heard from two students, we heard from twenty parents, we heard from six community members, and twenty-five PA ISD employees. Fifty-eight teachers saw the survey and responded. Six administrators responded, and one district administrator, as well as a stakeholder who had interest in children with disability, foster care, and other programs of that nature. So we had a wide range of those that really did respond to our survey. Not to, now, this is a kind of, when I first saw this, I thought, I don't know if anyone would really understand it. In fact, Kristen, who's not here today, she's going to another job, but Kristen put this slide together, and I thought, you know, at first it may be confusing, but look at the size of the words. What she's trying to show is the size of the words means something. Some of the biggest issues that were discussed in those surveys that were provided to us by Thought Exchange was that salary was critical, incentive is critical. I can tell you the word incentive is kind of a bad word with federal dollars. We've been told by the, by TEA, we need to not use the word incentive, because you can't incentivize someone, just like we can't use general fund dollars, because it's considered a gift of public funds, but we can do something similar. You know, we can reward you for work well done, or for working overtime, and things of that nature. But again, these are the things that were mentioned. Tutors, notice that's there. Look how small supplies is. So supplies didn't seem to be with the ones that completed the survey, was not as big of an issue as some of the others. Resources is up there, though, notice it. Next slide. So, as I said, we've got some allowable usage, and so for us, we heard everything everybody said, we've got about ten, twenty-five pages of Q and As from TEA that we have to go out and monitor and look at what they're saying is an allowable usage for these funds. But I want you to just focus on that first part, any allowable use of funds to be charged to ESER grant must be reasonable and necessary. Now, Dr. Getwood will probably attest to the fact, he says that all the time, because he handles a lot of the federal programs, or most of the federal programs, and they say that repeatedly, it must be reasonable and must be necessary, and it must be in support of the pandemic. We can't say we're going to buy a new bus just because we want a new bus out of the pandemic dollars. It has to be something related to improving the learning loss. Now, if we had to have a new bus to pick up students because we had more students than we needed to pick up, and they were trying to get to school to learn, we could probably make that work, but it has to be, we have to be able to justify how it's going to do the things that's listed there. Now, the good news is, when it first came, they first came out with ESER three, they had all of these things that we had to do, they hadn't given us all the information on ESER two yet, but they eventually came back and they said, all three, if you've got money, because there are some school districts that have not received their ESER one dollars, some, none of us have received ESER two, some of them may have received their ESER three if they've applied, but they're saying, regardless, we can go all the way back with ESER three, if we had a gap in March of two thousand and twenty, we can use our ESER three dollars to cover the gap there. Next slide. This is our plan, and this is at a high level, just want to focus on the how we divided it up and how did we get there. We had a team that came together, went through and evaluated what were the biggest needs of the district, we've gone through again, like I said, looked at the feedback we received from others, so we said, build and teach a capacity, eleven million... So we said build and teacher capacity, 11 million dollars, 11.1 million dollars. What's included in it? It includes the idea that we would be looking at some potential sign-on bonuses. It was looking at the potential of having, um, what we're calling retention pay and we'll talk about that a, a little more in a minute. But it's giving you some ideas of how we can at least try to help our employees to retain them and keep them in the district. Even though we're, our teacher's starting salary is 50,000 and in this general area of the, of the region, our, uh, starting salary is still probably very competitive it was and it has been, but we still have problems where others now that are receiving ESER or going through ESER and receiving ESER dollars, they're, they're providing in, incentives and I'm not saying that word, right? But they're providing something that's going to give the, the, um, of the, of, the opportunity for the employees to want to be there at the district and help us. Summer learning, we've had, this is the, we've, we've included in our budget about 950,000 for it. Then we've got some, um, we want to empower, as I said, empower our parents. So we've added some dollars in there to look at things like the wraparound services, which is going to help with social, uh, and, um, emotional needs of the, of the, uh, students. That's worth the 450,000 is for us to help in those areas. And then we've got the others that we feel, we, as a district, we feel we're all in this together. So we want to retain our staff. It doesn't, although it's very critical that we can retain the staff as a teacher and others that are involved with the curriculum and instruction activities. We feel, and I just heard y'all talk about it tonight, we need to retain our maintenance staff. We need to retain our bus drivers. We need to retain our operational, in order for our operational goals to be successful. So we've added in some dollars in this category, which would include some retainage, some re, uh, retainage pay for our other operational employees as well. And then we've added a small amount of money, not much. We, this is only for ESER three that we've provided this plan. We're not required to provide a plan at this point for ESER two. But we've included a small amount of dollars on this front end. We will add, we will be reassessing and abandoning our, our plans once we get approval from T E A on doing some of the other things such as air quality and, uh, air filtering and HVAC systems. So remember I said something about, yeah, we had some issues with, um, dollars that we received for ESER one? So here, I just, I'm recapping here to show you that with ESER one, the entire 3 million dollars we received in 2019, 20, we had to supplant. And what I'm really saying is we reduced the expenses that we had already incurred in general fund and moved those over to ESER. It had to still be allowable expenses. We moved them over to absorb the 3 million dollars that we were given for ESER one. ESER two, there, similar issue has come up because again, the students are not back and the estimation that we have right now is about 2 million dollars. We're using our, um, revenue template to try to estimate what that's going to be. But ultimately, T E A will decide how many dollars we're going to lose and, well, they won't say it's lose. What they'll say is we're not going to be able to fund all of what the state aid you should be receiving. So it's us, it will be up to us in order to get that 2 million back as to, again, supplant some of the fun, some of the dollars that we had in general fund and use our ESER dollars to help us to, so that we will not have a shortfall when we're, when we end this fiscal year. And ESER three, we don't know exactly how much between 2021 through the end of the entire ESER three period, we will need to supplant. We've identified a few things this year for the, I mean, for the new fiscal year. Uh, we think we need, we are going to use summer school dollars. We're going to move those over the curriculum audit that I'm sure y'all are all familiar with. We plan to move those over to take those dollars out of ESER. And then the, some instructional materials. I think on the agenda tonight, there's several, um, items related to new instructional materials that we're purchasing. We plan to, we're paying it out of general fund now, but we plan to use our, our ESER funds to help us. And then our distance learning, we want to use that. And when, when we get to our budget discussion, it'll, it'll make more sense why we're wanting to do that. So I kind of alluded to the fact that we were going to do some things with salaries and so I just kind of outlined a little of it. The retention pay, we've already kind of outlined what we plan to do. Um, an annual extra duty pay will be based on about five, it will be based on 5% for our non-exempt employees. These are our hourly employees. They will receive 5% annual of their base pay. 5%, not, not an increase that will be added to their base pay, but it will count towards their retirement. But that 5% will be up, uh, at one time that they'll get it in, on September the 15th. On two, for 2021, they will receive the entire amount. But we plan to provide two payouts for the remaining fiscal years involved. So we're going to do this for three years, um, starting with the current year we're in. And then the, the exempt employees such as your administrators and others that are, are paid and not on an hourly basis, they're paid, so they're paid just on a, a straight salary. We will, they will be, we will receive 4.5%. We're looking at sign-on bonuses for some positions. I think Mr. Metz may have mentioned that we, we're going to re-initiate the sign-on bonus for transportation and it may not, it was, it was not for all employees, but for some employees that, uh, some that the first five or six is what we've done in the past, that the first five or six that, uh, signed up and came, came to work for the district, we would give them a sign-on bonus. Looking at extra duty pay for professional development, we're looking at some fa- financial assistance for certification classes and the certification classes, we're looking at not just for, maybe we have some aides, maybe we have some of our own employees that's trying to complete their certification. We're investigating how much and how, investigate if we, how we can do that, how we can make it work. We want to grow our own. I participated this week in some discussions with, with T E A on another program, which just had some additional ESER dollars. It's limited to only six, uh, employees and they also had some other provisions for some of the students to do some things because it's a grow your own program. So we're going to try to do everything we can to try to get our teachers, get more certified teachers in the district. And then we're looking at additional temporary staff that may be needed. So next steps, we plan to, uh, we have to include our return to, to in-person instruction and continuity of ser- services. That's already been done. I believe Dr. Porter has already discussed it with you and, but we, it's required for ESER three as well as the spending plan that we just showed you, that's required. Our next steps, we have, we're reviewing the spending plan with you tonight and then we are preparing our ESER three grant and application. We're going to seek approval of the application and it must be done by the 27th. I had an employee who used to work for the district and they hated to hear me say that, but we are on a fast track. We must move forward quickly to get this done because we want the 27 million and we want to be successful in getting the dollars for our students and our employees in this district. So I, this, I wanted to leave you with one last thing. Together we can stand. And when I say together, in order for the plan to work, we all, everyone, when I speak of everyone, I'm speaking of the board, the community, the parents, the students, the teachers, every employee, we all must work together in order to make this work. All hands must be on deck in order to, to really pull this off because this is a tall, tall order for us to try to get it done and to have the, the results that we need. We need everyone on the, onboard and, and working hand in hand to get it done.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeans and to our board members before questions are asked. Thank you for, um, your support. It is, it's been a lot and as you see, everything that you've heard tonight, uh, we have, is a lot of planning, there's a lot of, um, just a lot of thought that goes into this. And I, and I do hope that our employees are appreciative of what you have encouraged us to do and that is give. And to, for Mr. Clearup, uh, just to clarify, to back up what Ms. Jean said, for the, it's three year, it's a three-year period and the first year for 2021, our employees will receive 5% and 4.5% in September, the entire amount. And then again, they will receive the same amount, but half, half in December and half in August. So this year, they're going to receive three separate checks in addition to their salary. And then for the, uh, fiscal year ending of '22 and '23, they're going to receive two checks as well for 5% and 4.5%. So thank you, board, for what you've done and the encouragement you've given us in order to make sure that our staff members are well compensated.
Ms. Ambrose.
I just want, just, just a little clarity, Ms. Jean. And that's in regarding the sign-on bonuses you indicated for some positions. Is it possible that we could utilize, uh, sign-on bonuses for Mr. Cipian and Mr. Rito's department? Is that an option? Um, because obviously we, we need them to make sure that the schools are kept with the standards of, you know, CDC guidelines and so forth. So is that an option to offer sign bonuses for, for those new hires?
So I, I think it's going to be a, a, a decision made by the superintendent as to the best use of the funds. So we, I, I'm not saying it's ruled out, but when we've got, and it sounds like 27 million, sounds like it's a whole lot of money. But when you're trying to spread it around and really trying to address, right now, we've identified most of the dollars where we are required to spend 20% on recovering the learning loss. We've identified about 90% of our dollars will be spent on that mission because we feel that's so critical for us to improve the learning loss. So I'm not ru, I'm not saying it's not going to be, but again, we have to remember the mission and how that, that we can achieve that mission to get, get it done.
And one thing I'll piggyback off of what, um, Mrs. Jeans is saying, it is in discussion. But as Mrs. Jeans did say, and I, when we, when we first heard about the funds, the first thing I told Mrs. Jeans, she was saying, we have to get, we've got to get this done. And I had to tell her, we have to stop and we have to think because I do know the government doesn't give you anything that they do not come back and audit. So everything has to be in place. Every penny has to be in place because I know we're getting all this money, everyone's getting all this money, but in four, five, 10 years, someone is going to come here and audit these books. And I still say, we're getting all of this money, but somebody's going to have to pay back this money, somebody. And it's us that are working every day are going to have to pay back this money. People just don't give you all this money and don't expect it to come back. I, I don't understand how it's coming, but it's come, it is coming, but I guarantee you, somebody's going to be responsible for replacing it. Okay? And board members, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeans. Moving on, minutes. Consider and if appropriate, approve minutes of the June 24th, 2021, regular board meeting and July 10th, 2021, board retreat. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Getwood. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurrent nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the board president per policy B E local. All of the items in consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which the event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately from its individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustee, give you a minute to look through the consent agenda items. I'd like to get a motion on the floor for consent agenda items one through 13.
Motion.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Reed and second by vice president Lofton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Personnel.
President Barti, I have given you the list of, uh, future employees for your consideration.
Consider if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers. Can I get a, I got a motion and a second by vice president Lofton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Porter.
Board members, I am asking that you consider and approve the creation of executive director of curriculum position.
Have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose and second by vice president Lofton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porter.
Uh, there is no information this month.
There is no information. At this time, at, at 8:02, I would like to call a German of this board meeting.
Oh, we got budget.
Budget meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry about this.
We, we, you're moving. Not quite. We're all over there. No move, no move, no second, no minute.
Okay, we have a budget meeting at this time.
At this time, uh, even with the ESER funds, that is, that is creating a lot of thought and a lot of, uh, decision-making. We still have our regular budget to address and that is the budget that we will be using to pay our employees for maintenance and everything else that we have, our bonds and everything else. So as we move forward, um, there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made. I'd like to welcome to the table, Mrs. Denise Dixon, Mrs. Dixon. I'm welcoming her to the table, this table, however, she is not new to the district. She's been with us 10 years and Mrs. Dixon has been named the new CFO. So we're very proud of Mrs. Dixon and we know she's going to, uh, Davis, I don't know, the D's, Mrs. Davis. Uh, and so we're very proud of her and now she's taken on the roles of trying to figure out how we are going to utilize all of these funds. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Before you, we've given you a presentation on, um, some budget information. Uh, we're just going to go over it high level, uh, just so, uh, you have what we know and what we're doing. If you start on page three, it gives our budget development calendar. So these are, uh, is, it displays our timeline and the different functions that we've done throughout this year. I won't read those to you, but you have the information there. Also, if you look at page four, it shows the activities that we have directly with the board of trustees. One of the things that we're going to note on this page is that our budget adoption and our tax rate adoption is going to be on August 26th, 2021. So then we displayed our budget process. So we gave you the process that we go through with our budget and some of the things that we look at and some of the factors that we include. If you go on to page six, we show some of our accountability requirements, what we are required to do. We're required to balance the budget so that our current revenues are sufficient to pay for our current experience expenditures. And we're a, prepare the budget in accordance with all federal, state and local requirements. And a little bit further in the presentation, we list out all the federal, state and local So on the next page, we list our legal requirements. We're, we're required to prepare our budgets in accordance with, uh, Texas Education Code, section 4402, 002 and 44006. We prepare our budgets in accordance with our T E A, uh, rules, FAST regs of Financial Accountability Standards Regulations and within our local and district policies. Then we have some state requirements. We are required to have a budget prepared by August 20th and we are required to have our budget adopted per T E A rules by August 31st. We're also We're also required to have our public meeting at least 10 days, it has to be advertised at least 10 days before the adoption. We also have some T E A requirements. We listed those out for you. I won't read them, but the one thing to note on this page is that we, when we, the board approves the budget, it ha, you have to approve the official budgets, which is the general fund budget, which is our Fund 199, our food service budget, and our debt service fund. We also show our T E A requirements. And our T E A requirements as it relates to P E M's. And one thing to note about P E M's is that P E M's show some valuable information for all districts, but it's important in showing our student demographics, it shows our personnel, and it shows us district finances. And on the next page, it's just some information for you to read about P E M's and the benefits of it. Next page. So these are some T E A requirements for our Chapter 49, as it relates to Chapter 49. We just received the notice today from T E A, and that's the information for our Chapter The next page shows the local requirements of our budget. And then we just come back and show you on this page, the budget calendar as recommended by TASFO. This is how we develop our budget process and our budget calendar here at the district. And then the next page is your tax calendar. And then we just get into your financial, some of the financial information. So on this slide, we're just showing you all of the elements that go into developing a budget. We look at our staffing, we have to take into account our property values, any federal funds we get, our student enrollment, and also the demographic changes. This page is just to show you some of the things that have come up out of our budget discussions as it relates to payroll and some of the non-payroll issues. Now, the, I'm not going to read them all to you, but the non-payroll estimate is about two million dollar increase to our budget, and we don't really have a dollar amount for the payroll. This slide shows our revenue estimation. You know, we take into account our state revenues, our local property tax revenues, and our other local revenues, and our federal revenues. And we have later slides that gives you a little information on all of those. This slide shows, we're just trying to display to you our maximum tax rate for the school district. If you look at, the total is a dollar and fifty-six point five six eight six cents. The fifty-one point sixty-nine cents is our debt service tax rate. Then we have our copper pennies, our golden pennies, and then our tier one is our M and O tax rate, which is the point nine, nine one three four. On this slide, we're just trying to show, as a result of House Bill Three, T E A has said that they will calculate a maximum compressed tax rate for us. So we tried to show you some different scenarios if we had, the first column is our current estimate. And that, we're using the, if you look at the tax year 2020 certified appraisal roll, that's a preliminary number of five point one billion tax assessed values. And that is not growth, but a decrease in our taxable value. And it's just showing you that our maximum rate that we could assess to the taxpayers is the ninety-one point three four cents. Then the second column is showing if we had small growth, which is two point eight four percent, our maximum rate decreases just a little to ninety-one point three three cents. Then that last column is showing that if we had, we estimated sixteen percent growth, which we know right now that we don't have, and that's just to show that we have a cap of eighty-two, point eighty-two point two cents on our maximum compressed tax rate. So there's a floor to what we're allowed to pass on to the taxpayers. This is just some information about our local property tax procedures. And this is some information from our property tax education code. I won't read that to you, you can read at your leisure. Okay. So this just gives you the history of our tax rate. We gave you the information for the last two years and what we are estimating for this current year. This is what makes up our local revenue number. And then we just tried to list out and give you some information on our federal revenues, where those numbers come from. We get money from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for our child nutrition program. We get money from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, which is our Head Start Program and our Medicaid SHARs Program. And we also get a little money from E-Rate for federal communications. This is just a preliminary number on where we think our revenues may be. Now, mind you, we haven't gotten the final tax of certified tax roll, so we won't get that until the end of the month. We'll give you at the next meeting more firmer numbers. But we just tried to compare what our projections looked like last year to what we may think it, may be at this, for this new budget year. If you notice that our local taxes, our local taxes are down because of the lower tax assessed values, but these are just the preliminary numbers and that we thinking we may see a decrease in local, local taxes of almost five billion dollars. And then on this side, we just tried to provide you some general accounting information on how the accounting structure, structure looks like. This structure is set by T E A. And what you see on the first column is our fund. So that's a three-digit number. So when you see the budget that you have to approve for the next year, it would be at the fund and the function level. And if the next slide shows the different funds that we have. The function code, actually, this is just a list of the function codes. It displays the groups that the district deals with. Like function 11 is instruction, is teachers. You look at function 23 is school leadership, that's your principals. Function 31 is guidance counselors. Then we look at our object codes. If you have a sixty-one hundred, that's payroll. Sixty-two hundred is professional and contracted services, and so on. Any questions?
Any questions, trustees?
One thing if I could, and I definitely want to thank the business office and the federal funding for their work. And we have two in the audience, Mr. Steve Malmay and Mr. Donald McCauley. That works well with our business office and the federal funding. Two things we need to always remember and think about when people are asking, where's the money and why we don't have this and, and the other? We build our budget on income that comes into us. Now, you all know that we've had challenges in the past with the petrochemical industry. And we are very happy this year that they have settled. So we, the larger refinery has settled due to their, with their values, but it's still going to be lower. It's about four hundred thousand, I think, lower with the incoming from one point seven, I think, to one point four, or one point, one point four, maybe three mil, three hundred thousand. So that means that when the values are lowered, then the money coming in will be lower, our income will be lower. And we still try to do as much as we can for our staff members to make sure that they're compensated. One big thing, huge, I would say, every year insurance goes up.
Yes.
And we tried and we will do again to pay the increase for our employee only. So it has, is, I mean, it has really gone up this year, but in addition to the compensation, we're going to do that, make sure that our employees do not have to pay the increase. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that employees and staff, students get everything they, they need, both financially and academically. And thank you for your support in all of that.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Thank you, Business Office, for your presentation. At this time, we would like to call a German of the meeting at eight sixteen. Have a motion on the floor by trustee Reed and seconded by the rest of the board members. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.